Virtual meeting, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. We're gonna have our invocation by Councilor Hilliard. And also, we'll have our pledge of allegiance by Councilor O'Quinn. But just momentarily with our thoughts and prayers are with Congresswoman Sewell's family. She know her mother passed away, so just wanted to keep Congresswoman Sewell and her family in our prayer. So, Councilor Hilliard, good morning.
Good morning. May we bow our heads. Gracious Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity, Father God, for us all to serve our great city, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch the Sewell family, Congresswoman Sewell and her family, Father God. Father God, touch them, Father God. Father God, be with them, Father God. Father God, let's help them in their celebration of life of their mother, Father God, and the proud work that she has done throughout not only just Birmingham and Selma, but throughout the nation, Father God. Father God, she served as a councilwoman, Father God, just like we are, Father God, and she watched out and helped them touch many lives, Father God. So bless that family, Father God, so that they may celebrate such an home-going for their mother and their loved one, Congressman Terry Sewell. Father God, I ask you to lay your hands on each and every one of us so that we may continue to make the right decisions for the citizens of Birmingham. Father God, bless my colleagues, bless each and every one of them, bless the city and the nation of Birmingham. At this time, Father God, let us all say amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Sir, Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Morning. Councilmember Smithman. Morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. President Protem Alexander.
Good morning here.
President Parker.
Good morning, good morning.
All right, I'm gonna do a declaration right quick.
Yes, sir. The Council of the City of Birmingham, having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, hereby finds that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimum functions of this body.
Move the item.
Second.
It's Councilmember Alexander and Councilmember Smithman, all right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're ready for approval of the minutes of March second, ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third of twenty twenty-one.
Move the item.
Second.
Would that Councilmember Abbott for the second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, got you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and the minutes are not ready. September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one through June eighth, twenty twenty-one. Parker, go through the consent agenda, and I know there's some addendums.
Okay. No nominations to boards and agencies, and consent agenda starts on page two with items one and two. Then we skip over to page four, we have item number three on consent. Page five, item number four is on consent. Page seven, we have items five and six on consent.
Okay, I think we lost our clerk. So we'll just, we'll wait momentarily, we'll get him back if not. Somebody have to substitute. If not, um, let me ask you. I guess I'll read them then, or we'll wait, just give them a moment.
Good morning, Matt Clark, how you doing?
I'm way on hurry. Okay, let's see.
Yeah, I think it was off with four or five, item, I think number four or five.
Okay, after item number four, on page five, then we go over to page seven with items five and six. Then we go over to page eight with item seven. Page nine, item eight. Page ten, items nine and ten. Page twelve, number eleven. Page fifteen, item twelve. Page seventeen, item thirteen. Page eighteen, item fourteen. Page nineteen, items fifteen and sixteen. Page twenty, item seventeen. Page twenty-one, items eighteen and nineteen. Page twenty-two, item twenty. On page twenty-three, items twenty-one and twenty-two. Page twenty-four, item twenty-three. Page twenty-five, items twenty-four and twenty-five. Page twenty-six, numbers twenty-six and twenty-seven. On page twenty-seven, item twenty-eight. Page thirty. Um, on page twenty-eight, items twenty-nine and thirty. On page twenty-nine, item thirty-one. Page thirty, items thirty-two and thirty-three. Page thirty-one, item thirty-four. Page thirty-two, items thirty-five and thirty-six. On page thirty-three, items thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Page thirty-four, items thirty-nine. Page thirty-five, item forty. Page thirty-six, items forty-three and forty-four. Page thirty-seven, items forty-five and forty-six. Page thirty-eight, items forty-seven and forty-eight. Page thirty-nine, items forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. Page forty, items fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. Page forty-one, items fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. Page forty-two, items fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one. Page forty-three, item sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five. Page forty-four, items sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine. Page forty-five, item seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four. Page forty-six, item seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven. Now, we also have an addendum, and I will be sending you an updated version because I have another addendum item. So as soon as Mr. Fraser gets back on, uh, but you do, you should have the addendum that I sent you out last night.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do it, we'll, um, we can, um, as we're getting in discussion, we'll do that. We know we have like one or two more coming. One is for shallow, uh, so.
Oh, Councilor before, I'm sorry, before we go into further, I forgot to tell you on page forty-five, item number seventy-three, the wording is revised on the second line where it says for the installation of fire station HVAC units, it should be for the purchase of fire station HVAC unit. And that completes the consent agenda.
Okay, um.
Mr. President.
Okay, uh, Council Williams, I'm gonna let Council Abbott go first, if you don't mind.
Oh, of course.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott, good morning, Council Abbott, how are you?
Oh, I'm wonderful. Um, on page thirty-five, I would like to add item forty-one to consent.
You said forty-one?
Page thirty-five, item forty-one.
Okay, I'm sorry, just kidding, let me turn my volume, I'm just kidding. Okay, so everybody good?
Actually, forty-one's been requested to be withdrawn by the city attorney.
Well, we won't consent that then. Okay, so then on page thirty-six, I'd like to consent item forty-two. And on page forty-four, I would like to add item sixty. Uh, no, no, I don't wanna add item sixty-eight, I wanna ask a question about item sixty-eight, and that is simply, are these trash receptacles for the recycling pilot, are we still calling it a pilot? What are these trash receptacles that we're purchasing?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, good morning, how you doing, sir?
Good, how's everybody doing today? Council Abbott, these are actually trash recyclers, they're receptacles that we're replacing in the downtown area, they sit on the corners.
Oh, the metal ones?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, I thought maybe this was our recycling, but. Okay, thank you, that was, that's all from me, Mr. President.
Okay, Councilor Williams.
Yeah, I was having a little bit of technical difficulty trying to find all of our addendum items. I don't know if something happened with my email or whatever, but I had an addendum item to schedule a public hearing, and I didn't know if that was the one that we're referencing.
No, we, I haven't seen it, but I did, I wanted to indicate that there were gonna be several more coming. It's not in the initial bunch, but if, um, through eighty-one, but we definitely can make it an addendum as soon as you are ready before we adjourn, we can take it up at that point. So at any point during the meeting, you, um, you know, you have that information available and ready.
President Parker, it is forthcoming.
Yeah, okay, it's, okay, all righty, thank you, all right. Council Williams is forthcoming, it's forthcoming.
Then what does the other addendum that, because I guess I didn't get a copy of it, I can't find.
There was, yeah, there were some sent out, Ms. Leitha sent them out yesterday, uh, afternoon, yesterday afternoon. Yes.
As you go proceed, I do have one item.
Yeah, you, and other, there are several more that are becoming, uh, Council Alexander.
No, I just wanna make sure the addendums are not on the consent, because I don't, I'm trying to figure out what's going on with my email, why I didn't, why I didn't get them. But anyway, all right, thank you.
All right, so, all right, so.
Mr. Parker, I'd like to ask for item seventy-eight to be considered for consent, that was on the addendum.
Yes, ma'am, seventy-eight, that's fine, all righty, um. So what is that on? You should have gotten that in, uh, that's for District seven and nine, uh, that was in the email Ms. Leitha sent yesterday. Okay. Hey, Mr. Clark, how you doing?
Good, sir.
You back up, okay. All righty, are there others that, uh?
Yes.
Councilor Hoyt? Let me go to Council Hoyt, we'll go, we'll go down the line. Good morning, sir, how you doing?
Going very fine, thank you. Item forty-four. Fifty-six.
Okay, you want them, you want on or off?
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Seven, seventy-one. Seventy-four.
Hold on, Councilor. That's why I'm gonna call. That was already hit, you know, straight up, man.
Councilor Hoyt. Hold on, because, Council Hoyt, because, um, Madam Clerk and, uh, the clerk, trying to get them, they're going back and forth, so just wanna make sure. Mr. Clark, you ready now?
We're starting with forty-four and fifty-six, correct?
Right.
Okay, uh, slow just a little bit for me, if you would.
Okay, all right.
Seventy-one. Yeah, seventy-one.
Seventy-one, okay.
Seventy-four. Um, this is out of order, fifty, uh, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. Fifty-nine.
I mean, like, in the fucking sports.
Sixty. Mr. Datcher, uh, turn your, uh, mic off, man, sir. And sixty-one and sixty-two. So you get it.
Okay, go back over to see you're talking, you could, just make sure we, we got it.
Fifty, fifty-seven to, fifty-seven to sixty-two.
Okay. All right. Is that all, Council Hoyt?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, are there others?
Council Parker, have we added, um, item seventy-nine and eighty to consent?
We have not gotten there yet, because we were, because Council Hoyt was going through, but, uh, we certainly can, uh, add seventy-nine, eighty, that's, yes, ma'am. Everybody good with that? Okay, all righty, um, those, uh, other, is that, other than the item come yet? Okay.
I just got the one that Council, uh, Williams asked about, so I'm getting ready to add it, and I'm going to send out another addendum to the council. Uh, just give me a few minutes.
Okay.
Can I double check that eighty-one is not on consent? That's correct.
All right, so. Ready?
Let me ask a question. Got a little twisted here on item seventy-four, did someone request seventy-four taken off?
Uh, I think Council, did you, Council Hoyt, did you want for that to come off, off consent, just trying to confirm it.
Is that seventy-four?
Yes, we're trying, we're trying to just double check. Okay, okay, we're just trying to make sure we had. Okay, all right, we're just trying to make sure. Mr. Clark, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, um. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, it will be approved by one motion. A separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing is a request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced. So, uh, just trying to make sure, Madam Clerk, are you, you have that item real quick, or?
But it, you just have to give, uh, I need a few more minutes. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, uh, we're gonna, uh, we'll just, um.
How many addenda do we have?
Yeah, okay, we'll just move on, let's move on with this, and then we'll, we'll, we'll deal with them separately. Uh, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote on the consent agenda, as we, as is.
Move the consent agenda, move the item.
Second.
All right, uh, Councilmember Protem Alexander and Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Um, aye, okay, the consent agenda is approved, okay. Um, we'll go to the first item, and we'll, we'll deal with everything as, as it comes in. First items, clerk.
Uh, let's see. I think we're starting with forty-four. Item forty-four. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an assignment. The center right away to city payments to amended and restated project agreement within Weldon Field Development LLC and WF Lakeview LLC, pursuant to which an amended and restated project agreement dated June the second, two thousand and eleven, between twenty-nine, seven LLC and the city under which the city agreed to provide up to one million five hundred thousand dollars in incentives in support of twenty-nine, seven LLC's development of a mixed-use retail and residential project located at the northwest corner of intersection of Twenty-Ninth Street and South and Seventh Avenue South, which agreement was assigned to Weldon Field Development LLC with the city's consent, will be further assigned to WF Lakeview LLC, the city's consent, motion please.
Move the item.
I can.
Okay, all right, uh, Chief, you have someone that can give us an overview, and I know, uh, Council Hoyt, you're gonna, you have a question, but Chief, if you could, have someone give us an overview.
Yes, sir, Mr. President and members of the council.
Good morning, me, it's morning, too. Sorry, you done, okay, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, so we have Attorney Jim Stanley from our city attorney's office, and Mr. Griffin Lassiter from the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity that will speak to that.
Yes, good morning, Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so what we're doing, uh, you may recall that last month, the council approved an assignment of this existing agreement from two thousand and eleven from a entity called Twenty-nine, seven LLC to a new owner, Weldon Field Development Company. This is an incentive agreement for the Twenty-nine, seven mixed-use development on Seventh Avenue South, that's where Hattie B's located. Weldon Field Development, uh, has determined that they want this, uh, WF Lakeview, which is a single-purpose limited liability company, to actually hold the, uh, ownership and the assignment of the agreement. So we're simply just adding an assignment of the agreement to what we did, uh, and approved last month.
Not sure, Mr. President, Mr. President.
I was just trying to, okay, I was, I didn't know, I already recognize Council Hoyt, if he's got questions to kind of, uh, go ahead, and you have the floor, Council Hoyt, for a second.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to, to see, um, you know, most of our incentives are, uh, for downtown, and I just don't see, um, these kind of incentives for west of sixty-five. And it just, you know, it concerns me, um, that, um, you know, that's, doesn't seem to be in parity in terms of how we incentivize, um, these organizations, and particularly, uh, when they're gonna, they've already began to build or to do whatever they need to do, so why do we need to incentivize?
All right, um.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can, I can only answer for the, the, the item that's before the council, because this has already been approved. I think what Attorney Stanley is just recommending to the councils that is just a name change of the company. So the council has already approved the incentive of this agreement, and right now before the council is just the change of the company's name.
Council Hoyt, this.
Yeah, so, so does the city have a, have any, uh, rights to reconsider if you change, uh, the name of your organization? Uh, it doesn't.
Mr. Stanley King speaks to just the purpose of changing the name for the agreement purposes.
Yeah, again, the, the incentive agreement's already in place, there's nothing new with it. Uh, so the city's obligation to pay incentives in place is just being assigned to a new ownership entity. That, that's the only thing that's changing.
So I guess my question is, uh, Attorney, um, if, if it's just a, a name change, have we done an up-to-date credit report on these folk to see if they still have the ability? Because generally, when people change name, there's some, some other issues going on, and I'm just saying, it's just, it's normal practice in business, so I'm just trying to see, did something else go, go, uh, go south, or so, I'm just, yeah, I just wanna understand.
There, again, there's been a change in ownership for the entity, uh, as far as the credit worthiness, if they don't generate the tax revenues, they don't get the incentive.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
Okay, all right, is that, Council Hoyt, is that, we're good? Okay, all right, okay, the other council members? Okay, all right, seeing that, all right, Mr. Clark? We're ready for forty-four.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye, okay, item forty-four. Next item.
Should be item fifty-six. A resolution to step in the lump sum bid of Taylor and Marie Construction Incorporated, eleven Dexter Avenue, Birmingham, at the amount of four million four hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars for the B X Birmingham Express Bus Rapid Transit East Transit Center, this being the lowest and best bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor into, into a contract with said Taylor and Marie Construction Incorporated, essentially the form contained within the bid documents, and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under that contract, now to see the appropriation, motion please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, the item is before you.
Okay, um. Chief, good morning.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have Ms. Denise Bell, who has our capital projects department, and Ms. Charlotte Shaw, who is the project manager and lead for the B R T project that can answer any questions.
Good morning, how are you all? Morning, Ms. Bell.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning, I did. Good morning, you got, just tell us a little bit of what, how many buses and just what's going on here, uh. Then Council Hoyt had a question, but if you could, give us just a little overview of everything.
Okay, um.
Morning, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Council. Uh, yes, absolutely, we're talking, just please to update you, the BRT is going well. Uh, we're looking at a total of eleven buses, and that'd be, uh, seven in, in service. And that'd be, uh, three buses for spares. Of course, we are due to finish, uh, the project, the total project by, uh, June of two thousand and twenty-two, just in time for the World Games, so we are moving forward. Uh, and things are looking well, this particular company also won the West construction. And they have been doing a great job on the West with their, uh, with their performance. And they are on schedule and working in budget, so the BRT, I'm glad to report, is moving forward well. Now that they have the East, that's great for us, because they only came in thirteen percent higher than our estimate, which nowadays, as you can understand, is great for material construction right now, material costs are, you hit the roof. And so, with that being said, we are very happy, a thirteen percent increase, all we anticipate, because we actually anticipated more. So, uh, we're looking good and things are moving forward well.
Okay, our Council Hoyt.
Yeah, well, and I put it all because, uh, we have not had an update in, uh, in several months, and, uh, we do have a transportation committee. And, um, I have, um, appreciated when, uh, Ms. Shaw and Ms. Bell have come before the committee, but, uh, you know, it's unfortunate to come to the council meeting, know, to give an update. And that's not how this process supposed to work.
Mr. Hoyt.
Council Hoyt, uh, we, we apologize for that, the, the, the project is moving, uh, quite fast, but we would, we are definitely planning to provide the Transportation Committee a full update. Uh, we have been, uh, actually having that conversation, and we've actually had that conversation with the mayor as well. But we are definitely coming to your committee to provide a full update as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's general how the process work, at least it worked for every other committee. So, uh, and I don't want to be treated any different than that. Since I've been a proponent, uh, from its inception. And, uh, certainly, uh, we're glad to know that we have been running, and I did see it looking.
Council Hoyt, Council Hoyt, can you hold on for a second, sorry. Ma'am, whoever, can you mute your computer or your phone, we're hearing another conversation and, um. Okay, excuse me, Council Hoyt, you have the floor, I, I, I'm sorry for interrupting, I just wanted to make sure people were hearing everything that you were saying.
Well, that's fine, I, uh, I was just appreciating an update, uh, from the committee, from these two, uh, wonderful, uh, erudite leaders, uh, who do an excellent job of communication, I just wanted to communicate with me and my committee.
When's your next meeting, Council Hoyt?
I think it's on the twenty-fourth, I believe, next Wednesday, I believe.
Yeah, yes, sir, Council Hoyt, we have a major bid going out pretty soon, but we would, we would definitely give you a, a, an update on the twenty-fourth. Uh, Ms. Shaw and Ms. uh, Bell on, on the call, and we'll make sure that they're ready to provide that update.
Okay, and, and, and if they could also provide, uh, the minority participation on this project.
I can actually give you that too, right now, uh, we did, uh, come in, we're actually exceeding our minority, minority participation is fourteen percent. We're averaging fourteen percent for each package that we submit out, so we got over fourteen percent minority participation on the West. And Taylor Marie has given us more than fourteen percent participation even on the East. So that's very important to me, and I ensure that we exceed our minority, minority participation, so we have about four or five companies right now who are participating with us. And that's including electrical companies, framing companies, uh, concrete companies, and, uh, a few smaller construction companies.
Yeah, well, and I know that the federal government at least, uh, requires thirty-five percent. So I, you know, we, we still not there, so, um, it, it, you know, it behooves us to, to do that, particularly, uh, when we in a, a down economy, uh, and, uh, we know a lot of folks need work. And, uh, we got plenty of electrician companies who got plenty, uh, concrete folk, and so, uh, they can do better.
And I'd just like to mention on this particular project, we probably will average around twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent after it's over, because our goal for the FDA is only fourteen percent, but we are exceeding that on this particular project.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Chief Moore, you'll send out, if you'll send out a written, is this gonna be a written presentation, you can share it not only with the committee, but the other council members, so.
I have Ms. Shaw and Ms. Bell, uh, if they have a, uh, presentation, uh, and if so, we can get it to you early, uh, prior to the committee.
We'll put it on.
Council Hoyt, you can just make sure we all get it.
Yeah.
Now, Council Hoyt, can you then just share it with the entire council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
On the agenda for next, next Wednesday.
Okay, all righty, thank you, okay. All righty, any other questions or comments about the, uh, item fifty-six? Okay, all right, Mr. Clark, we're ready.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
President Park.
Aye, um, that item passes, before we go to the next one real quick, just want to just remind everyone, please, um, pay attention to your mute button, and we're picking up various conversations. Um, as the meeting is going on, so I just ask you to please be aware of your, uh, your mute button and, and those type of features. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the next item.
Okay, uh, one second, give me one second here. All right, uh, item fifty-seven should be next. Uh, a resolution to step in and approve the bid award of Home Shield Birmingham for CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. Motion please.
I'm of approval. Second.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, good morning again, sir.
Can you bring up item fifty-eight through sixty-two, because they're all kind of related on, on the same type of bid?
Yeah, well, and I was, I was just about to ask, Jazz, you're so smart.
You trained well, good sir. Sure, Mr. Clark, and, Mr. Clark, sure.
They need more credit than they're due.
Item.
Item fifty-eight.
All right, now.
A resolution accepting and approving the bid award, uh, Providential Remodeling LLC Birmingham for the CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. Item fifty-nine. A resolution accepting and approving the bid award of redesigned living and construction in Hueytown, Alabama for the CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. Item sixty, a resolution accepting and approving the bid award of McDonald Construction Birmingham for the CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. Item sixty-one, a resolution accepting and approving the bid award of, uh, Providential Remodeling LLC Birmingham for the CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. And item sixty-two, a resolution accepting and approving the bid award of redesigned living and construction in Hueytown, Alabama for the CRGP Housing Rehabilitation. Motion on those items, please.
Move the items.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott and Councilmember Williams, the items before. Items.
Chief, uh, or?
Yeah, um, Mr. President, Mr., um, Chris Hatcher is on, he can speak to all these items along with Mr. Corey Stallworth, who serves in our community development department.
Good morning, how you doing, sir?
Good morning, good morning, good morning, Council President and Council Members, um, as, um, excuse me, uh, Mr. Mitchell, it stated that these are all associated with our Critical Repair Grant Program. And these are the awarded bids for recipients of, uh, the grant, uh, uh, the grant services, so approval of these items will allow us to contract with, uh, these contractors in order to provide, to provide the necessary home repairs to, uh, the grant recipients. And I'll be happy, or, uh, I'll be happy to any, entertain any questions.
Okay, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, uh, well, and I want to know, uh, how many of these companies are minority companies?
Sir, uh, I don't know that off the top of my head, these are bid it, we're required to go through, uh, the, uh, the city's bid law, so, um, our colleagues in, um, procurement and purchasing would be better suited to answer that question.
Are they here?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Mr. President, I, I would, I would ask respectfully, uh, that, that information is brought to this council, uh, not just today, but going forward, um, because, again, we got contractors here in the city of Birmingham, and all, most of these are from Hueytown. And last I check, Hueytown ain't bringing us to, to, uh, to Hueytown. So, um, you know, we, we need to support our home. And, um, and, you know, we have a city that is seventy-two percent, uh, African-American. And I know contractors are out there, know plenty of them, that are out there that could have probably benefited from this. And, um, it doesn't seem, uh, that there's a great effort, uh, to do that, and, you know, and these people are gonna be going into our homes. Um, and I, you know, and I don't know, uh, who we have in place to, to ensure that they, uh, employ the same, uh, level of quality work. And that's been my concern in having, um, having been in construction. I know that if you don't get behind these folk, they'll do whatever they want to do, uh, in our communities. And, uh, and so I, I, you know, I need to know that somebody gonna go behind these folk. And obviously, none of them are minority contractors, you got seven, you got one, two, three, six companies, not one, that I know of, um, African-American home companies.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have Ms. Carmen Jones, who is our purchasing agent for the city of Birmingham, that can speak to the process of the procurement of the bids, um, when it comes to this type of service, Ms. Jones.
Morning, Council. Um, to answer your question, Counselor Hoyt, item fifty-eight for providential remodeling, item sixty for McDonald Construction, and re, and living and construction are all minority vendors.
That's what I need to know. Yeah, I'm good.
Council, Council, we'll make sure that we get that information prior to the council agenda going forward.
It's important, it may not be important to everybody on the council, but it's important to me.
We'll make sure that, Council. We'll make sure that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other questions from anybody else? Okay, all right, Mr. Clark, we're ready.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Uh, President Protem Alexander. Councilmember Park, President Park.
Yes, okay, all right, the, uh, those items, I should say, all pass, okay, we're ready.
All right. For the next. Item seventy-one. Which is on page forty-five. A resolution approving payment to Jones and Bartlett Learning LLC, Burlington, Massachusetts, Massachusetts, at the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents for emergency care and transportation of sick and injured. Navigate Premier Access eleventh edition, the unit prices on file now for the purchase agent for the fire department according to section three dash one S seven of the Birmingham City Code. Motion.
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right, the item is before you.
Uh.
Yes, we have our public fire chief, uh, Coram Moon, that only can speak to this item.
Good morning, Chief, how you doing?
Morning, Council, I'm good. So, Coram Moon, Birmingham Fire Rescue, the item before you with Jones Bartlett for twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cent. Uh, these are our books for our upcoming recruit group, which starts on the twenty-first of this month. Uh, we're looking to have over students, uh, so these are the books for EMT Basic, and it also has online access for homework, uh, practice exams, and other, uh, parts of the EMT Basic program.
Okay, did everybody come offline? Blue. Okay.
Here, I'm here, Mr. President.
Okay.
We're here.
Okay, that's it now. Okay, I, I, my screen, my screen must have gone blank, uh, Council Hoyt, um, I think you had a question about item seventy-one, or you, did he address, the chief address your question?
Uh, yes, he has.
Okay, all righty, cool, are there any other questions from anyone else? Okay, all right, Mr. Chief, I mean, Mr. Clark, we're ready.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, uh.
Aye.
Okay, we're good.
All right, item seventy-one passes, okay.
Seventy-four.
Next item.
Item seventy-four. A resolution authorized the director finance to make six refunds in a total amount of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Motion please.
Move the item.
Second.
Alexander and Williams. The item is before you.
Hey, um. Hmm. What, you have?
Yeah, well.
Okay, all right, Deputy Chief.
Yeah, whatever Council Hoyt question.
Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, well, just.
Okay, Council Hoyt, all right.
What, what was the nature of the, uh, of the refund, and why are we doing this?
So, so, Council, every week we have refunds on the agenda from certain businesses. So they pay their business license taxes, their sales tax, their use tax, so we always go behind and, you know, reconcile everybody's taxes, so if there are overpayments, we have to issue a refund.
Okay, I'm still waiting on that. Okay, great.
Okay, all right, any other questions, Mr. Clark, I think we're ready.
Hey, all in favor, let it be known by saying, uh.
Aye.
All right.
Good, all right, item passes, next item is to court.
Be addendum item eighty-one. A resolution authorized in the bid utilized funding received by the city of Birmingham from the United States Department of the Treasury for the American Rescue Plan. Um, to, that Rescue Plan Act, to promote programs and services that will educate the public regarding the health benefits of receiving COVID-nineteen vaccinations and promote the health benefits of receiving COVID-nineteen, that, that's the name, vaccinations in an effort to increase the vaccination rate of residents of the city of Birmingham in response to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Motion please. Motion on that. So move. Councilmember Halye.
In a second.
All right, item is before you.
Let me, uh, that's an item that, uh, we've been talking about. This is dealing with the fact that the city of Birmingham, we are vaccinated within the city of Birmingham and the county, uh, we're in the second from the low, from the bottom, uh, Mississippi being the lowest, um, and so we have to look at incentives in order to, uh, increase our numbers before July. Uh, and so we have to look at incentives in order to, uh, increase our numbers before July fourth. Uh, President Biden has given us a challenge to reach herd immunity by July fourth, uh, which is seventy percent. So we almost have to double our efforts at a time when, uh, vaccination sites are closing, the mass vaccination sites are closing and have closed. Uh, and so, uh, you know, and also I think you all been hearing in the news, there's a Delta variant that is coming, uh, that's going from India to Europe, that'll be, they are predicting that will be coming to the United States about fall. Uh, you also have school system trying to vaccinate, um, you know, their youth from twelve to seventeen. Uh, so, you know, if we don't become and stay proactive, we could potentially, uh, end up where we were last year. Uh, and so this is in an effort to, uh, generate conversation around, uh, you know, what things we can do to utilize the funding in order to make sure that we reach herd immunity as quickly as we possibly can. If not, uh, we could, like I said, we could potentially, uh, be where we were last year sheltered in place. So that's the purpose of the conversation. Uh, we also, we know we have some funding, uh, thinking, I guess, first round, I think we have about fifty-two, fifty-three million left. This is part of just jumpstarting the conversation around what the priorities are for the city and also working on community stakeholders on, uh, the allocation of the remaining fifty-three million. Understand everyone has different initiatives, uh, but this is, if we don't vaccinate our residents as quickly as we possibly can, nothing else will matter because we will be where we were last year. Uh, and we've experienced that. So that's kind of kick off the conversation. I'm happy that we have a little conversation, we moved this to committee whole, that's fine. We have a work session, but I just wanted to kind of bring it before and, uh, get feedback some. Then we'll take a round, we'll go from there.
So which item is this?
I had my hand up, Mr. President.
I, I, I know, she just asked, this is item eighty-one. This is Abbott, I'm calling you, Counselor, first, she just asked which.
Because I'm having trouble finding all these addenda.
Oh, okay. There we are now, eighty-one. Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, Mr. President, I certainly, uh, appreciate your efforts, uh, in this matter. But it's hard for me, uh, to support something that I don't know what the plan is. You know, I've seen this whole thing, um, unfold. And when I've approached certain, uh, groups about coming into my community, uh, to do, uh, these vaccinations, I've gotten no response and yet they have been, um, all over the place other than, um, on a, um, on a large scale in, in the most populated area, um, in the city of Birmingham is, is answer. And, um, you know, and I asked and I was told, uh, by several different organizations that they were going to come and provide this for my constituents and they didn't do that. And so I don't, I'm not going to support anything that I don't know the plan because the plan needs to be across the board. We all have constituents, we all have concerns about, uh, persons getting, uh, vaccinated. And, you know, and most of the press conferences that I've seen have not included the council, but, uh, maybe one or two. And, um, and I think it's important that people hear, uh, the voice of their leader, their chosen leader from their respective districts. And, um, and so I've been looking at panels and, and all that and had not included other counselors, to my knowledge, and it may have been. But, uh, you know, I'll support it when I see what the plan is and how we're going to do it and we do it with some sense of equity. And, um, because, uh, it shouldn't be that, um, only select few and only one person driving where those, where those, um, those sites are showing up. And I've asked several times, several organizations, and if I need to call them out, I will. But I've been lied to and, uh, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to support something. And then we need to decide on what organizations will provide these, uh, vaccinations and what can we expect from them? Uh, they should have a plan as to how they unfold and get this out.
Yes, sir, and, and I'm very comfortable with, you know, after we have one or two more speakers, we send this item to committee hold and let's sit down and let's talk through what that strategy looks like. I'm perfectly, I will making that motion, uh, after we hear, if there are one or two speakers that want to speak or not, I can make the motion at the appropriate time, so, uh, to work through all those, uh, issues, Counselor Hoyt.
Well, maybe we'll have a, um, a committee hold because I said it about a month ago, we still ain't had one. So, uh, maybe that happen now.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments or anything?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, this is for, this is to spend the American Rescue Plan Act money. I thought all of us were supposed to turn in our items for proposals and we were going to have a discussion amongst ourselves of how to spend the money. So why is this on the agenda when we just had to have it turned in by this Friday, this past Friday? I'm just trying to get my arms around this thing. If we're going to have a meeting and all sit down together to discuss it, then let's do that. All do it the same way. I don't want to put my stuff on the agenda when we haven't had a discussion yet. All star sale.
This is not, this is not, you don't see any dollar amounts or anything like that. This is simply, uh, to just jumpstart conversation. Everyone has, uh, the deadline was due to Mrs. Kidd, uh, I think President Protim Alexander was to, uh, have it in. Uh, and then we will, um, lay out everyone's project request or, uh, items that they have submitted. It will have a, uh, a work session on that as soon as possible, so.
We don't need to all be putting them on the agenda like this, right? I mean, we're going to have a meeting and discuss all nine of our opinions of how to sp- spend the money.
Yes, I think the remaining, I think phase one, I think is fifty-two, fifty-three million.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, with that, um, what we can do, uh, I'll just withdraw it, but we will, uh, then just take it up at committee of the whole. And we should have those, um, everyone should have turned in all of them, I think, uh, with, with, to Mrs. Kidd and to Mr. McDaniels. Uh, and then we will, uh, share that list out. And if somebody missed something or it didn't, someone didn't get it on the email, then we certainly will add that. So, uh, and we will probably be, uh, receiving a briefing from our, some of our policy people from the League of Cities, um, as well as we, uh, work through that work session. So, all right. We're gonna, yes, ma'am.
Uh, when do you think we'll have committee of the whole?
Uh. Uh, actually, I've needed to talk to Counsel Abbott, I, I, I don't want to, we need to figure out, one, how do we have a budget meeting and also committee the whole? So we just got to, I just need to talk to, uh, Counselor Abbott later today and I'm sure we'll have an answer. We'll put out something probably by noon tomorrow.
And, Mr. President, we, we haven't, we haven't gotten, um, responses from very many council members about when they want to have the, uh, budget workshop. So we really need everybody to respond on that, just back of your mind kind of thing.
Okay, all right. So, yes, Counsel Smith, so probably by noon tomorrow and I'll, I'll communicate with Counselor Abbott, uh, later, uh, later this evening. And then have something else, okay? All right. Any other questions? Okay. All righty, we're ready to move on to the next items, Clark.
All right, item eighty-one is withdrawn, item eighty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Greater Shallow Baptist Church Community Development Corporation amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, motion please.
Move the item. A second.
All right, Councilmember Protim Alexander and President Parker for the second.
Yeah, okay, all right, um, see any questions, we're ready, revoking score.
Counsel, uh, seems like everybody's still here, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All right, item passes, next item.
The item eighty-three. A resolution setting a public show calls hearing June the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one to consider the matter of revoking the business license issued to Club Euphoria, Euphoria Sports Bar and Hookah. And to consider rescinding resolution number twenty-three dash, twenty-three ninety-nine dash eighteen, granting approval for a lounge retail liquor class one license approved on November the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The hearing will be held via Cisco Webex. Participants in the hearing will need to follow the link provided below or use the call-in information provided. This link will also be available for the public participation, even if the council meets in the council chamber. To attend via your computer, follow this link, uh, that will be provided if you would like to attend via phone dial one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And then enter the following access code of one eight seven two seven zero zero one zero four pound, pound. Thanks, sir. Motion.
Move down.
Second.
Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Smithman? Item is before you.
Yes.
All right, Counsel, this, uh, item is set a public hearing for revoking the business license, which will sort of revoke the, uh, class one liquor license at Euphoria Sports Bar and Hookah Lounge, um, on Fifteenth Street West in Birmingham, that is the location where there were, uh, multiple shootings this past weekend into Saturday evenings, uh, Saturday evening, Sunday morning. Um, and, uh, by the end of the weekend, beginning of Monday, there was, uh, one, uh, victim did succumb to, uh, there injuries there and did, uh, die. So we, uh, will be looking at rescinding that, uh, license and have a report from BPD by that time.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, let me summarily, uh, thank you for bringing this item forward because, uh, I have had several calls and texts uh, from residents, uh, in the rising West Princeton area. And, you know, they have, um, have really, uh, been in P with their quality of life by this establishment. Um, and this is not the first occasion where we've had these shootings and murders, uh, with this establishment. And several years ago, Council President Dan, um, Austin, uh, created an ordinance that dealt with the, uh, venues of violence. And this, uh, certainly speaks to that. And we, um, we definitely, you know, have to do something. Uh, Wise and West Princeton, for the benefit of those who do not know about that neighborhood, is a motion to senior citizen neighborhood. And none of our seniors have endured this and this constant gunshots. Not only that, uh, Mr. President, aside, uh, note, I mean, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that they are racing cars, they are doing all kind of things, you know, over in the night. And, um, and I would, I would, you know, I would, uh, respectfully ask that you have a public hearing in person, um, so we can hear, because everybody don't have access to the internet. And so, uh, so that we can hear from these residents who's had to endure this, um, uh, clubs since its inception. And I understand it didn't start off that way, uh, but they have, um, emerged to be, uh, a menace um, to, um, to that area and to the city of Birmingham. And so, um, but, you know, that's your prerogative, but I would, I would strongly suggest that. And, um, but, you know, these people, um, you know, they, they are really upset, really upset. And I, I think I shared with you a text that I got, uh, yesterday. And it's from a person that, uh, that understands, um, these clubs and what have you. But they, they said, listen, this is not good, you know? And so I really appreciate you, uh, going ahead and, and moving with this. Uh, and we also need to look at the King Mark too, um, as I, uh, state you in, in the email as well.
Yes, sir, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Hoyt, um, the, the, any member of the public, uh, that wants to read on this item on the, on the, uh, the twenty-ninth, I believe, when we're going to be hearing this, can come to the city, uh, hall chambers and, um, speak on a laptop if they don't have internet access. Um, however, I do not want to delay this hearing, uh, for, to have an additional here, here because it does need to come before the council. I do, it, it is my opinion, but the evidence that I've seen that this is a threat to public safety in the city of Birmingham, and I don't think that we can afford, uh, to push it off any further. I think that the council needs to consider this as soon as possible. And this is the first date that we can hear it according to the ordinance that gives the adequate amount of notice. And with that said, Mr. Clark, I just want to say that, um, uh, we want to make sure that they do get the notice, um, in that ten-day advance window, eve- even if that means, uh, hand delivery of, of the notice or, or whatever, uh, so that we can go ahead and consider this because I, I, I don't think that, um, that having this establishment open for a prolonged period is going to benefit the safety of, of both, uh, Rising West Princeton as well as the entire city of Birmingham. I think we're ready for a vote, uh, Mr. President.
Okay, all righty, Clark.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Smith, okay, Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Uh, President Protim Alexander?
Aye.
President Park?
All right, okay, that, uh, hearing is set for June twenty-ninth, um, so, all righty, um. All right, one other, um, travel addendum is going to be travel addendum eighty-four. Um, it's Counsel Hillier and Counsel Parker to attend, uh, meetings out at Houston regarding a major, um, potential event for Legion Field, and that's June seventeenth through twentieth.
Did y'all just go to Houston, President Parker?
Yes, ma'am, and we have to go back, there is a major, major football, um, event that we think is going to be successful for Birmingham. That is taken, that, uh, there's major event going on at Houston.
Smile, Councilman Smithman?
Oh, y'all don't invite nobody else, that's all.
I was about to say, they've been, they've been mobilized on all of this.
No, 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 no.
That's okay, that's okay, they don't like it anymore.
You and, 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 um, and Counselor, um, uh, what's his last name? See his day, by the way, Counsel Hillier.
I think we need to include others.
So Counsel Hana want to go?
Well, you know what, Crystal, I'll take you to dinner on whatever day we go to Houston, we'll go to dinner here in Birmingham, how about that?
All right, anyway, we think this is going to be a major, major, uh, benefit for the city of Birmingham and for Legion Field.
Counsel President, while we're on that subject, um, I have heard some concern from the community about the event planned for the July fourth weekend. You know, it's in the news recently that one of the, uh, performers scheduled for that concert on July third, I believe, um, has been arrested for a shooting in Miami. Um, and, uh, you know, just given the level of violence in the city currently, uh, I would like some, you know, uh, thought given to, um, you know, how that event might, you know, affect the, the level of violence in the city and, and some concern given to making sure that that doesn't happen.
I can, I can tell you already, uh, Counsel Quinn, I, I think, uh, a director, park board director Bennett and her team has been working, uh, already with the police department. They've had several meetings already, uh, and so, uh, we'll ask Director Bennett, probably in the next week or so, to share some of the things that they can share, but Director Bennett on the park board, they've, or they've been. But Director Bennett on the park board, they've, or they've been engaging meetings with the, uh, various departments, uh, to address those concerns. So that was, uh, so, so they've been on top of it. Probably, I think they've probably been meeting the last two or three weeks. So we'll ask Director Bennett to, uh, come back and provide some information. But they've been, uh, work very diligently, uh, in meetings with a lot of various departments, including the police department.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's important because, you know, looking at the, um, the ticket sales site for that, you know, it very clearly says that the event is being sponsored by, in part by the Birmingham City Council. And, um, you know, I, I, for my part, I don't wanna be sponsoring, uh, a performer, you know, who's, um, in jail currently for, for shooting somebody. So, uh.
Yes. What we're doing, counsel?
What a performer's that?
Pushai Steve.
Okay. Um, Counsel Hoit is, I mean, Council Quinn is at the, uh, they're working with us on the vaccination, uh, efforts. As you know, we have a race against time to be able to vaccinate young people from twelve to seventeen. Uh, some of the artists, uh, have done public service announcements encouraging residents to please get vaccinated. So we're, it's an ongoing effort to, one, uh, be able to, um, you know, sometimes they'll listen to identify with, um, influencers. We wanna say, just like you see Coach Saban has done when, all season, Coach Saban is moving around. So we're hoping that some of the artists, uh, you know, that have recorded public service announcements are encouraging, uh, you know, people to get vaccinations. And hopefully that will increase our numbers, uh, in the twelve to seventeen age group. Uh, and so, uh, that's part of the ongoing effort is everyone understands the importance of being vaccinated. Also understanding, uh, about the safety measures. And that's why Director Bennett and, uh, working with the police department and other agencies have been meeting about this, uh, since the announcement was made.
To Mr. O'Quinn's point, Mr. President, I think that, um, that something like, uh, having some Alabama football players, um, and some of the coaching staff at Alabama come, uh, one Saturday at Legion Field, uh, to, to promote vaccination efforts and, and meet, uh, members of the Birmingham public, something like that, uh, I think is a great idea. Um, or, or, or something that, uh, could be beneficial in terms of, uh, so we, you know, you're the, you're the chairman of sports and, and entertainment. So, Mr. Parker, if you will, uh, start pursuing something like that, I think that that is a wholesome way of getting our youth, uh, dialed in and, uh, hopefully getting that, our, that, that age range of, uh, under twenty-one vaccinated.
Uh, also, please reach out to the Auburn football team as well.
Oh, I don't, I don't know about all that, but, uh.
Amen, amen.
But, but not, it's, I think, uh, I think something like that would be, um, beneficial for, uh, especially have it during the daytime. Beneficial for, um, you know, on a weekend where people don't have to be at work and whatnot would be beneficial for the whole community.
Well, we're working in all ideas, suggestions are definitely, because we have a race against time to get, you know, everyone vaccinated. And so we've at thirty-five percent, we have to get to seventy percent. So it's all hands on deck also. But yeah, we'll make sure we get all, invite all of the schools.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Blue Auburn and UAB. Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, and next time, could we, uh, consider Charlie Wilson? Because he seemed to pull a better crowd than these.
Uh, I will say, Counsel Hoit, stay tuned for Labor Day.
Okay. You get off of Charlie.
I, I would just say, stay tuned. No, stay, stay tuned, Labor Day weekend perhaps. So just stay tuned on that thought that you just gave me. Uh, so anyway, all right, with that, Mr. Clerk.
Ready, but. Can I, can I get a motion on that?
Yeah, move the item. Second.
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
Just feel the travel.
I did.
Okay, who made the motion?
Mr. Hillier.
All right.
What's the item?
The travel to.
Oh, okay, all right.
Uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoit.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman. Member Williams.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Okay, all right, okay, that item passes. All right, thank you. All righty, um, Mr. Clerk, do you have anything else on your?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, Counsel Abbott.
Yes, sir. Uh, the next virtual budget and finance meeting will be on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at three thirty P M. Submissions are due on June twenty-third by twelve noon. There are no exceptions. We appreciate everyone getting their information in on time and complete. And thank you very much for your cooperation. And we are looking forward to hearing from all members of the council as to when it is convenient for them to meet, to have a budget workshop. I think the alternatives that we offered were to do it, uh, during work hours, Monday through Friday, after normal work hours, Monday through Friday, or on Saturday morning. And, uh, so just let us know your preference so that we can hold the meeting at the time of day when the most people can participate. And hopefully everybody can, but we just need to know your opinions about when we should meet. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay. Counsel Hoit, you wanna remind everybody about your meeting? Is it next week? It's next Wednesday?
Yes, sir, uh, next Wednesday at twelve o'clock, um.
Okay.
In the, uh, council chambers, um, those who wish to, um, to join the meeting by virtual, you certainly can, can do that. Um, and just, uh, a question for the Chair of Budget and Finance. And, uh, that is why we have a budget workshop when you have always suggested that there's nothing we can do about the budget. So, I mean, that's, that's some, you know, that's an oxymoron, uh, to say that we're gonna have a budget meeting and, and you saying that we can't change it. So don't waste my time.
Well, I'm not, this is not my opinion. This is the law that was changed by the legislature that says that we can't make any changes unless the mayor agrees. But we still should sit down and talk about whether we want to ask the mayor to make any changes or to agree to anything we want to do. At this point, you know, we're nine people with nine individual opinions. And, um, you know, I would like to see more money in the budget for sidewalk repairs because our sidewalks are in horrid condition. They're just, we each have an opinion about what might need to be added and certainly we can ask the mayor. That is our purview by law, but we, you know, we need to talk about it. And if no one wants to talk, we don't have to have a meeting.
Okay.
I figured this much, I mean, deals have already been cut, uh, with respect to that. Uh, because we, uh, nobody's raised the issue other than myself, uh, about, um, about this budget process. And, um, and I've even offered that we, um, uh, that if we got six votes, somebody would have to come to the table. Um, and, um, and have to negotiate, you know, um, but that's neither here nor there. This, I don't think this council is willing to do that, but it should be because, uh, we all have, uh, things that we would wanna see in our district. It is important, but if, um, but if certain folks monopolize it on those capital projects and things of that nature, then, um, you know, that's, that's not how, that's how, that's not, that's not a good way to run, run the city. But anyway, that's, that's for another conversation. I did want to say, uh, Mr. President, that that was a, a kickball, uh, competition last week. And I saw these older men were getting beat up by the ball.
Counsel Hoit, don't do it, don't do it.
And some of them didn't even make first base of chair. I'm sorry, uh, anyway.
Counsel Hoit, you know, hey, let me just, you brought a good, a good point, and this is on our Park and Reg report. Um, is that it's gonna be this Thursday and every Thursday, probably what for the next through the middle of July or the end of July. Uh, and so, um, I think it's everyone, uh, please go out and enjoy. If you wanna get some exercise on Thursdays from what five-thirty to about nine, is that?
Yeah, I think so.
At Legion Field, you'll see a great, you, you will see a lot of great, uh, exercise, but also see a lot of competition from a lot of people you see on this very screen and you see around city halls. So, uh, plus you also have teams that are, that are, that have been formulated from the communities. Uh, but it's a great way to have a great family fun experience. And, uh, also, uh, it's, it's taking place at Legion Field and we're utilizing, uh, the, the stadium for another purpose. And so we think kickball, we really should grow it and make it, you know, because I, from what I heard from last, uh, Thursday, it's a don't miss TV experience now, so.
And Jeff falling out on the ground. I, I, I mean, I saw it all. Okay.
So maybe we'll cross the videotape and YouTube it.
That's okay.
Anyway, that's our report for Park and Reg, but, but I think it's great, it's a great exercise and fun for everyone, uh, family fun, uh, event. I think the DJ and all kinds of stuff. So I think it's a great experience and a lot of exercise. And so, um, not sure who's playing who this weekend, but, or this Thursday. But I'm looking forward to a great, uh, a great experience on Thursday night at Legion Field under the lights. So anyway, that good, we didn't capture it all.
Yep, you did, and they did a good job, the, the, the city of Birmingham, they, they represented.
And so, we, we appreciate, and then we need to get a team too. So, you know, maybe we make some last minute additions to some of the other teams, uh, but. Oh, oh, whoa, what's a little hate going on here? It was noted that, uh, Mr. McDaniel didn't fall, but we gonna leave that alone.
President Parker, I saw him. I got pictures.
What'd you say, Mr. Clerk?
You might wanna just add some folks to Council Hoit's team. He need a little help on his team.
Okay, anyway.
I might have a couple spots on my team if I want to try out.
Oh, okay. Well, we, it's a great experience and great exercise, especially as we're coming back out, you know, out of sheltered places. It's a great time to have a great family fun experience at Legion Field every Thursday between now and I think July twenty-second, if I'm not mistaken. So everyone, please, uh, come out and support, uh, all of the teams that are.
Remove Mr. Mitchell from beyond me.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the, you have to be vaccinated to play, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I certainly wouldn't wanna be out there running around with people who didn't bother to get a vaccine.
Yeah, I know, but I think everyone's doing the right thing. Um, so with that, any other announcements? Counsel Williams ready to wrap us up?
Absolutely. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Let it be known by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, all right, but please be safe. You're lucky.